Looks like what.
That's how much we give Adneth as.
I've shared that with him. He thought all that stuff went whenever he asked for money for like Measure P and stuff.
Right.
Looks like we're very good here this year.
Right.
Donate, so.
Yeah.
Okay. But yeah.
I'm sure a lot of people think they're talking about their water bill.
Yes, evidently not, yeah. Yeah, let's go. I'd like to call the council meeting to order Monday, October 8th, 2018 at 7:00. We're reconvening from closed session and there was no reportable action. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Schnablicker?
Here.
Mayor Protem Santinas? Councilmember Garza?
Here.
Councilmember Coops?
Here.
Mayor Dutton?
Here. I'd like to make a motion to excuse Mayor Protem Sunny Santa Inez.
Second.
Got a motion, a second on the floor for that. Without objection, that'll be the order. May I have everybody rise for the invocation led by Councilmember Juan Garza and the pledge of allegiance by Jim Delonga, our Director of Economic Development.
Thank you. Will you please bow your head? Dear Lord, we come before you as we gather here tonight. As we begin this meeting, we ask that you would get our thoughts and our actions so that we may have a successful meeting, so that we may accomplish our goals here tonight on behalf of our great city, our residents, and our businesses. We ask that you please be with the men and women in uniform in our community and abroad who bravely serve our communities and our nation every single day, and that you cover them with your protection. We pray these things in your mighty name. Amen.
Please place your hand over your heart and begin with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, council announcements are next. The mayor's prayer breakfast will be held tomorrow, Tuesday, October 9th, at 7:00 a.m. to 8:30 a.m. The annual event is put on by Kingdom Causes Bellflower and Bellflower Municipal Association. Come out, enjoy the delicious breakfast, and begin the day at Bellflower's newest event center, the main. Tickets are $20 per person. To purchase tickets online, visit www.2018bellflowermbp, that would be for the Municipal Association, and eventbrite.com. Or, since it's tomorrow, I would suggest you buy 'em at the door. Councilmember Dan Coops?
Nominations for the 2019 Bravo Awards open today, Monday, October 8th. The Bravo Awards honor residents and employees in Bellflower who have demonstrated outstanding public service or acts of heroism related to public safety during the past year. Nomination forms will be available at City Hall, also at the Bellflower Sheriff's Station Substation, any Bellflower park, and forms may be obtained online by visiting the City of Bellflower's website. The nomination deadline is February, November, no, it's Friday, November 9th, 2018. Recipients of the 2019 Bravo Awards will be honored at a special ceremony on Thursday, February 7th, 2019, at 11:00 a.m. at the William and Jane Bristol Civic Auditorium inside Bellflower City Hall. Jim Abbott, a major league pitcher with the Los Angeles Angels and the New York Yankees, among others, other teams, will serve as our special keynote speaker along with other local dignitaries. You may remember Jim Abbott was that pitcher that was born with one hand, and he actually pitched in the major leagues, the first person to ever do so, so real special person gonna take care of us on this Bravo Award night. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Coops. Councilmember Juan Garza?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The City of Bellflower and the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department have teamed up with Kaiser Permanente to host the National Take Back Initiative event on Saturday, October 27th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the Kaiser Permanente Bellflower Medical Office located at 9400 East Roscrenz Avenue. In addition, if you can't make it on October 27th, there is also a permanent drug take-back bin at the entrance of the Lakewood Sheriff's Station, which is located at 5130 Clark Avenue. Where prescription pills, ointments, and syrups can be dropped off, no questions asked. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Garza. Councilmember Ron Staublicker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The City of Bellflower, Chamber of Commerce will host the 10th Annual Trick or Treat on the Boulevard event on Friday, October 26th, at 6:40 in the afternoon, beginning at 6:40, yeah, there it is, beginning at 6:40, 6:30 in the afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schnablicker. All right, public comments, Mr. Stewart?
Before we do that, I wanted to ask the council if they would indulge us and have a small presentation by the folks from Liberty Utilities regarding some local programs that go on and some questions that may have come up over the past couple of weeks.
Sure.
Hello, everyone.
Good evening.
Thanks for fitting us in really quick. First of all, I want to introduce Frank Heldman. He's our Director of Operations here with me today. Second, I wanted to announce a free workshop in partnership with WRD at Main Thompson Park on Saturday, October 27th, from 10:00 to 1:00. It's a free drought-tolerant plant landscape class, so after you take advantage of the turf removal program and you want to know what plants you need to plant in place, come on down and we'll show you some examples and how to do that. And lastly, we did hear that there have been some questions for us, so we just wanted to make sure that we're available tonight to answer any questions, so we'll be out in the lobby. We also are available anytime by phone, but we did set up for our customer service representatives to be available the second and fourth Friday of each month at 9:00 and 3:00. So just to make an appointment, we just want to make sure that we hear the residents and our customers, and we just want to be present.
And that would be for Liberty Water customers?
Correct, for the, for the, yes, correct. Thank you.
Because that's not all the whole Bellflower, is why I was getting that, just if you're a Liberty customer.
Yes, thank you, thank you for that clarification. I should have said that.
Okay, well, thank you for coming out, and we'll see if there's any questions.
Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, just a quick question. So, thank you for being here tonight, and I appreciate you, I'm assuming this is a reaction to some of the comments that have been made online from some of those customers in the Liberty Service area within Bellflower, correct? Do you respond or engage to those comments online?
I did personally, under my own personal account, just to make sure that people are aware that we're available. I can't answer those questions online because I actually don't have the account customer, the customer's account information, I can't get to it. So I did respond with a variety of ways for our customers to reach us. So, we do want to answer the questions, but they just have to call us with their account number.
And so how would a customer that's not watching us here tonight or not engaged in social media know that your available times that you just shared with us tonight?
Well, we have a mailer that we sent. It'll be in their upcoming bill, and it'll show the one-on-one, so everyone will get that in the mail. Say that again?
Say your number. What's your number and five?
Oh. Sorry, let me give you actually the customer service number. Our customer service number, thank you, is 562-923-0711. And we're available 8:00 to 5:00, Monday through Friday, and of course, I said the one-on-one attention on Fridays.
Great, thank you. I appreciate the response and the times and the fact that you're making yourself available to the community, I appreciate that. I think there's sometimes a misperception out there that somehow the city has oversight authority over the water companies that service our city, and even though that's not the case, at some level, you know, we want to make sure that if there's any questions from our residents, that they know where to go and get questions answered. So I appreciate you coming here and making yourself available, and also the extra effort on including those inserts in the bills to let people know that maybe they can see us but would still be interested in contacting you, so I appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Thank you for the feedback.
That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I've got a question.
Mr. Coops?
So you service portions of Bellflower, not all of it?
Correct.
And you also serve cities surrounding Bellflower?
Correct.
Could you tell us those cities that you also serve?
Yes.
All the city or portions of?
Yes, I'm happy to. It is Artesia, Bellflower, Compton, Norwalk, Santa Fe Springs, and Lynwood, thank you.
So are all the rates, are the rates that you see in our Bellflower area, if I lived in one of the other cities, Artesia, Norwalk, would my rate be the same there?
Correct.
So it's the same wherever you provide water?
Correct, in our six locations in southeast Atlanta.
Right, not, that would be the old Park Water Company that stands alone.
Correct, yes, sir.
And so those rates would be consistent in every city?
Correct.
All right, thank you.
And they're posted online, too.
All right. I didn't know if Bellflower was being charged one rate, Norwalk another.
It's a good question, no.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coops. All right. Thank you so much, and you're gonna, you're gonna be outside?
We'll be out in the lobby, yeah.
Be out in the lobby, okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
All right. Mr. Stewart, public comments?
This is the time set aside for the public to address the City Council on matters not listed on the agenda. Anyone wishing to address the City Council should come to the podium, be recognized by the mayor, and state your name for the record. If you wish to address the City Council on an agenda item, you may do so by approaching the podium as we review that particular item. You'll be given a reasonable amount of time to address the City Council.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Anybody in the audience tonight would like to come up to the podium now? Now's the time for public comments for anything that's not on the agenda. Who wants to be first? Well, not seeing any, then we're gonna move on. No public comments. Item 11A, Jeff?
This is consideration possible action, conduct a public hearing to consider adopting Resolution Number 18-65, a resolution adopting medical cannabis business permit, NCBB renewal fee pursuant to Bellflower Municipal Code, Section 14.08.060. And we have this over to make the presentation to you.
And, Mr. Mayor, before we start, as has been custom since December of last year, I will recuse myself out of this item due to an employer-client relationship.
Okay.
Thank you.
Let the record reflect that Councilmember Garza has recused himself on item 11A. Okay, we're ready when you are.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. This evening, I'm bringing forward item 11A, a public hearing to approve a renewal fee for cannabis permits. All 12 cannabis permits that were previously, excuse me, that were previously issued will expire on December 31st of this year. The Bellflower Municipal Code states that those that currently have cannabis permits may apply to renew their permits. This fee is only a processing fee for renewals. Here is the fee breakdown. If approved, all applicants would still be required to pay the annual permit fee, which in 2019 is $26,000, along with the $5,000 annual education fee and other taxes and fees associated with the permit. So this $6,357 is only for the review of the renewal application. And that's all we're looking to approve this evening.
Which this, this money, this $6,000 and change number, that is just fee recovery?
Correct.
Just paying your way.
Straight fee recovery broken down.
My colleagues, you have any questions to staff or to open the public hearing?
Can you share with us, apparently there have not been any opening of any cannabis businesses in terms of manufacturing, distributing, or manufact, any of the four items. So we're anticipating that by the end of the year, some of those may not, may or may not come forward to complete the process. Is that a possibility?
So at this point, we're asking applicants that already have permits to turn in a renewal fee along with the renewal application. Those applications will be reviewed, and the city manager will determine if he believes renewal should occur or if it should be revoked.
So it's still, it may, just to send in your money does not guarantee you that the permit is going to be reactivated?
This is completely discretionary.
That's interesting.
It's non-refundable, is that right?
Non-refundable. And this $6,000?
So if you don't pay, you know you're not playing.
Correct.
If you do pay, then it's still discretionary.
Correct.
Right. Okay.
All right, I'll make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
Let the record reflect that the public hearing is open. Without objection, that'll be the order. Anybody in the audience want to come forward and discuss this item before us? Not seeing any, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All right, without objection, that'll be the order. What's your pleasure, colleagues? I'm gonna make a motion then, so where's my stuff here?
The one-man band tonight.
Yeah, yeah, we have, we gotta work double duty here. I'm gonna make a motion to, to adopt Resolution Number 18-55, a resolution adopting the medical cannabis permit, business permit fee for the renewal purposes of the Bellflower Municipal Code.
Second the motion.
And a motion is second on the floor by the mayor, and Councilmember Coops is the second. Call roll, please.
Councilmember Schnablicker?
Aye.
Councilmember Coops?
Aye.
Mayor Dutton?
Aye. Mr. Stewart, 11B?
We're asking that this item be carried over until the next meeting. We're still waiting some information from Juan Garza's properties, so I'm asking the council to open the public hearing and continue it through October 22nd, 2018.
Should we have a brief presentation first, or just go?
Oh, sure.
I mean, we ought to let the public know what we're, what we're gonna open.
And let the record show that Juan's back in the room.
Oh, yeah. Almost.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. Tonight, we're asking you to continue the public hearing to October 22nd for the purchase of property, actually, excuse me, the sale of property located at the northwest quadrant of Artesia and Lakewood Boulevards for the development of two hotels. We are still working on finalizing the agreements for this, and so we weren't quite there yet when the deadline came for this agenda, so we are asking you to continue it to that point.
Okay, I'll make a motion to open the public hearing for item 11B.
Second.
Got a motion on the floor by the mayor, and a second by Councilmember Garza. Anybody in the audience would like to come and talk on this item? Well, we got some quiet people tonight. Must have been a good state of the city, huh? Answered all your questions.
You're warm out, right? Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
We need to continue the public hearing.
Hold, continue the public hearing to October 22nd.
To the 22nd of October.
I second that. So we got a motion on the floor by Councilmember Coops to close, to, to advance the public hearing to October 22nd, and second by Juan Garza. Call roll, please. Roll call.
Councilmember Schnablicker?
Aye.
Councilmember Garza?
Aye.
Councilmember Coops?
Aye.
Mayor Dutton?
Aye. Item 12A, Mr. Stewart?
This is consideration of possible action to read by title only. Way further reading, introduce ordinance 13, number 1366, an ordinance amending the Bellflower Municipal Code 10.10.020 definitions and 10.10.160 designation of specified areas governing residential parking districts. And Mr. McNerney is gonna make the staff report for you today.
To the rescue.
There it is. Off to a better start, all right.
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Stewart, Mr. Mayor, Honorable Counsel? Off to a even better start.
Thank you.
Okay. This evening, I will be presenting ordinance number 1363. It's an ordinance amending the Bellflower Municipal Code Sections 10.10.020 and 10.10.160. Earlier this year, at the direction of council, staff contracted with RSG Consulting to provide a parking permit study. RSG reviewed parking programs throughout Southern California and provided staff with five recommendations, which, if implemented, would make Bellflower's parking program line up more closely to the city detailed in the study. RSG's study and recommendations were presented to the Public Safety Commission at their April 17th, 2018 meeting. The commission unanimously voted to approve two of the six recommendations, which were, first, to increase the percentage of units needed for a petition from 66% to 75%, and secondly, require that future districts include full neighborhood blocks in order to avoid partial blocks. However, any existing partial block districts would be grandfathered in. These recommendations were presented to City Council at the May 14th, 2018 meeting. At that meeting, council expressed entrance, expressed concerns, excuse me, that some of these cities recently formed parking districts are too small and irregular and should be a more standardized criteria for determining district boundaries. Council tasked Public Safety Commission with drafting a working definition of the term "block" for use in foreign parking districts. On August 21st, 2018, the Public Safety Commission voted 5-0 to approve the following definition of a block. I'll go ahead and read that for everyone. Parking block for, means for purposes of preferential parking district formation only, all residential property abutting or having frontage along one side of the right-of-way of a public street or highway, between a street or highway and railroad right-of-way, terminus or dead-end street or highway or city boundary. An intersecting street or highway only determines the boundary of the parking block on the side of the street or highway that it intersects with. If a parking block exceeds 750 feet by using these boundaries identified, then a parking block will not be longer than 750 feet. This block definition mirrors an already-existing definition of a block found in BMC Code Section 17.08.010. We are, however, adding a 750-foot minimum distance to blocks which exceed 750 feet. If approved, this ordinance would add the block definition to BMC Section 10.10.020, and BMC Section 10.10.16 would be amended to include the block requirement in the designation process. And for visual aid, the second BMC Code section, the 10.10.160, would add a subsection B, which would read as follows, a specified area must consist of at least parking one block. And it gives sort of a visual representation of what that definition means. Under the first example would be here, this is Laurel Street between Reeves Avenue and Virginia. There's an already-existing natural block indicated in the red area there, and for purposes of this definition, that would be what a block would constitute of, and the 750-foot minimum distance would not apply in that example because we have a naturally-existing block in between two intersecting points at that point. And then where the 750-foot distance would apply is here, we have Rose Street in between Lakewood Boulevard and Clark Avenue. That is quite a long street with no other intersecting points. We measured out roughly almost half a mile in distance, so it would be somewhat unrealistic to expect someone to want that large of an area for parking for a district. So in this example, where a natural existing barrier or boundary is not found, then a 750-foot minimum distance would apply at that point. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions. Any questions? I have none.
I do. The 750 was interesting, the 750 feet you came up with, because that's just a little over an eighth of a mile.
Mm-hmm.
And you referenced that it was in the Bellflower Municipal Code somewhere else, 750 feet, so.
No, the 750 feet is not. We were specifically just adding that to this section, the, in the definition. The majority of the wording here, it does apply in the BMC Code.
It does apply, okay, that's where I misunderstood you.
Yeah, so we are adding in the 750-foot requirement.
And the thought for the 750, have you got any examples of how we come up with that number?
We looked at already-existing districts that we have already, and 750 feet roughly, depending on the width of a lot, is roughly 14, 15 houses long, and that fit the majority of the districts we have currently.
So that's about 15 parcels, that's a good analogy, because I was trying to put it in my head, I never come up with that one.
Mm-hmm.
But I like that one, about 15 houses is an average.
Yep.
Okay. That was my only question.
All right.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. It's your pleasure, guys. I'll make a motion, oh, wait a minute, we ought to conduct a public hearing on this one. Sorry. I'm gonna make a motion to open the public hearing?
No, this is a consideration item.
Oh, I'm on the wrong item. Okay, I'm sorry. 12A, not, let me. Make a motion to consider a possible action, see, okay, make a motion to introduce ordinance number 1366 and waive further reading.
Second.
Motion on the floor by the mayor, and a second by Councilmember Coops. Call roll, please.
Councilmember Schnablicker?
Aye.
Councilmember Garza?
Aye.
Councilmember Coops?
Aye.
Mayor Dutton?
Okay, item 13A?
This is a consideration item, a consideration of possible action to provide direction to staff regarding the implementation of an online parking permit system. Mr. McNerney is here to get answer any questions you might have. Thank you, Mr. Stewart, Mr. Mayor, Honorable Counsel. This evening, I will be presenting my second presentation, which is on details on an online parking permit system and seeking counsel direction on its implementation. At the May 14th, 2018 City Council meeting, direction was given by council to explore the use of an online permit parking system. Staff began working with the city's parking citation and yard sale processing contractor Turbo Data Systems to provide this service. Having since identified the necessary components of an online system, staff is now seeking direction from council regarding its implementation and associated costs. Currently, annual permits and guest permits are only available in person at City Hall or the substation. An online system would allow citizens to access permits at any time from anywhere. The inclusion of an online permit system would not replace any of the already-existing in-person services already being performed at City Hall and the substation, but will add an extra method to obtain permits. Costs associated with the online permit system are detailed in the following table. There is a $1,000 one-time fee for starting the online system and a $200 monthly service and cloud hosting fee. There is a $4.50 cost per annual permit processed by Turbo either online or by mail. Those would be the ones processed 100% on, by them. No city staff would be touching those. There is a $1.50 cost per annual permit processed by city staff over the counter. There is a 50-cent cost per RV permit. There is a 50-cent cost per guest permit transaction. Any online payment made with a credit card carries a 4% convenience fee or a $1 minimum fee, whichever is greater. Email notifications provided by Turbo are free, and mass mailing notifications are $1.50 per mailer. And to give somewhat of an example of how, if the city were to incur no costs and were to pass this all to the end-user or to the customers, this would be a typical breakdown of what people could expect to see. So the first example, if someone were to come in and buy two annual permits, currently, if they just buy two annual permits, they would only be charged $100. $50 for the first permit, $50 for the second permit. If no costs are absorbed by the city in this, the customer could be expected to incur additional costs ranging in the neighborhood of $13.36. And those would be for increase for $4.50 processing fees on each permit, plus $4 credit card fee if they, when they pay online. Second example is a resident who will be ordering 15 guest permits online would incur a total cost of nothing for the permits because they are free, so that would, that is not changing. However, if they get them online, they would incur a 50-cent transaction fee, and it's not a per permit, that's a per transaction fee, and also a $1 minimum credit card fee, since they would be paying for that online. And also in the third example, a resident who orders an RV permit would incur a cost of $5 for the permit, that would remain unchanged, and we have a 50-cent transaction fee plus a $1 minimum credit card fee. So if no costs are absorbed by the city in this at all, the end-user would expect to be paying more for these, for these permits. So what we're seeking direction on are two questions. First being whether the city will be absorbing any of the processing costs associated with each permit type or passing them along to the customer. First being whether the city will be absorbing any of the processing costs associated with each permit type or passing them along to the customer. And or secondly, whether the city will be absorbing the credit card transaction fee or passing it along to the customer. Would like to note also that the processing costs associated with yard sale permits, which are done through Turbo already, the city does already absorb the processing costs associated with tho- with those permits. It's a two two charges. One is a one dollar credit card fee, which is would be the minimum fee. Also a one dollar processing fee, which the city already absorbs for the yard sale permits. And these are just some totals that we've done so far through two thousand and eighteen. So through two thousand and eighteen, the city sold six hundred and seventy-five annual parking permits, one hundred and forty-one recreational vehicle permits or RV permits, and handled two hundred and thirty-two requests for guest permits. Based on these figures, if all processing costs and credit card transaction fees are absorbed by the city, a cost of approximately eight thousand dollars would be incurred annually by the city. It is our belief, however, that a fair number of customers would continue to visit the substation or City Hall to obtain permits, especially for annual permits, which will reduce the incurred annual cost. It is worth noting that the city's charge for annual parking permits, fifty dollars each for the first two, one hundred dollars for the third, and two hundred dollars for the fourth is above the twenty-seven dollars per year per permit per permit median for cities reviewed in the recently conducted parking study by RSG. If the city were to absorb the few dollars associated with online costs for an annual residential parking permit, it would keep the customer cost from exceeding the regional median by an even greater amount. And with that, I'll be more than happy to take any questions. Yes.
The fees, the four dollar fee, is that charged by Turbo Data for the four dollar credit card processing fee?
Do you mean the four percent?
Four percent, I meant.
That is, yes, that is.
So is there any way that we could process the fees through our credit card processing company and give fees to offset the cost to Turbo Data? Because that's a hell of a lot of money to be charging for a processing fee when we get basis points, we pay basis points.
That'll be a question we'll ask.
So I think it's worth asking. And then secondarily, because if they just tell you the fees and we could write them a check at the month, at the end of the month, then all we're accruing only the basis points on the our processing on that as opposed to their fees for the four percent, which is frankly exorbitant.
Let me explain a little bit here. Being a merchant and credit card processing, and I think we have another merchant on board, it's the amount of the transaction. Because these transactions, you're gonna have a book of them under ten dollars, under five dollars. It's your average ticket cost. If this is, you know, and I get a very good rate because of the volume. But the volume, but the total ticket, you have a lot of paperwork for not a lot of money. You're not gonna get a better rate.
I agree with you. I think we get a better rate too. That's my point.
Better than four?
Yeah, I think so.
But we're talking a percent. You know, it's the other fees that come with it. It's a game, four percent, and then you have all these other fees in the. I don't think we're talking a lot of money here, Mr. Stewart.
No, we're not. We're not talking a lot of money, but four percent, I mean, like, it's eight thousand dollars a year to absorb by the city. My point is, I'd rather absorb it through the cost of our own credit card processing company, which is lower, than the four percent that would be charged by Turbo Data. And if there's, I mean, I think you could take action tonight to do that, absorb the cost. But we'd be looking into whether or not we could pay that fee ourselves and absorb the the cost of the credit through our own processing firm, which is less than four percent. And Tay, I mean, if, I don't know if Tay's upstairs or not, but he might come running down here and tell us what that fee is. But it is quite a bit less than four percent.
Probably around two, seven, two point seven, two point seven, three percent.
He's not here, okay. So I think what I would do is if that's possible, Brian, I'm gonna look into that and try to, if you can get direction, if council goes to the direction.
Well, let's see what council's gonna do.
Yeah.
I'm glad you had those examples up there because that's what I wanted to know. Those example one, two, and three, that really made a lot of sense. And I'm glad you put that out there for everybody. Thank you. And any questions, staff?
I do.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. During your presentation, you intrigued me with one one of your reports. You said that you expect that to continue to have people come in and apply for these permits in person rather than online. Can you tell me how you came to that conclusion?
We came to that conclusion based on a lot of people, if they're going to, lots of, most people want to come in, lay down their hard-earned money and get the permit right then and there. As opposed to if they go through the online system, they'll have to wait and it will be mailed to them. So there's a bit of a delay with that, so they are not responsive as in getting in to renew their permits on time as these are good for a calendar year. They may have to wait a week to week and a half to get that permit.
Got it. So, because especially when you have, I guess, permits, you kind of, some of those are thinking are last minute and you don't have the luxury of a week unless if you know.
Right. The guest permits will be a little different because they'll actually be able to go online and it will give them a downloadable PDF file that'll be able to, it'll be locked down, it'll only be printed one time.
So you can print, okay, I'm sorry, but that was my main concern. I was under the impression you can print the guest tickets.
Yes, you can.
Okay, you can, okay, because that's what it's about.
The the RV permits and the guest permits will be available to be printed online.
Okay.
The annual permits, no, because it's be a physical hand take that is either get it from us or it will be mailed to them by Turbo.
Got it. Because I, as these, as we're looking at the eight thousand dollar fee, I'm thinking historically, the convenience of doing things online tends to get illicit more participation because it's faster and easier rather than having to make the time to go down somewhere and fill out paperwork and. Okay, so I have three additional questions. So for the two hundred dollar monthly service fee, the cloud hosting fee, is that for an unlimited amount of permits?
Correct. Correct, yeah, that amount would not change regardless of one person or a million people go online to purchase permits.
And that's for the for the cloud hosting for the city itself, not for the actual?
That would be the cloud hosting of the actual of us getting access to to their network and being able to access because it'd be their their physical internal network and their their application, as it were.
Okay. And then the other question I have is the eight thousand dollars that you're showing here in the report, is that based on on how many permits annually? Is it based off of the the current scenario of the, what was it, the six seventy-five annual permits right now?
Yes, it is, yeah. We went ahead and based it off of the the numbers we have here. And we factored that in. If the city would incur all costs associated with it, we factor very, very high. And the eight thousand was on the very high end of what associated cost would be if the city absorbed everything.
So that's the worst, as as right now, that would be the worst-case scenario?
Yes, sir.
Got it, okay. That completes my questions. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, staff.
Thank you, Mr. Coops.
So this contract, if we enter into it, good for one year?
Initially, we'd probably go for one year to see how well this is working out, and then we would take it from there.
So if we were to go to the second year, there's no guarantee that it's gonna be the same rate now. Our eight thousand dollar outgo could easily be nine or ten thousand.
Easily. It could, potentially could, yes.
Do you feel as though if we went totally online or offered that possibility that that we would save employee wage time and what have you? Is there a guesstimate as to what we might save not having to do in-person activities?
To to factor in my own time, because I, at least at the substation, I do process a quite almost ninety percent of these applications that come in. And depending on what point in the year we're talking about, December, January, February are just overrun with applications. And we could spend, myself, I could spend at least an hour or two a day just inputting applications into our own system. Because people come in hordes to buy these these permits, especially when their annual permits are set to expire. So I can go away for a weekend and come back and have twenty or thirty on my desk to be inputted.
So there could be a cost savings if we underwrite this underlying possibility, right?
Absolutely.
I'm just concerned about once we start things like this, it's hard for us to revoke it, you know? And then what is our promise for the future? That every year it goes more. But I'm cognizant of the fact that we're spending man-hours and trying to keep this thing moving through your office.
And it's even even a split manpower because City Hall does a fair share as well. So there's individuals here at City Hall to do some, plus myself at the substation.
Well, I think what you just mentioned, that could be easily two, three hundred dollars a day.
Very true.
I'm looking at what we also offer as the, we don't, we absorb this when we do the permits for garage sales, correct?
Yes.
And so I'm trying to be equitable with all the constituents here. So are, because you have a motor home, are you in a higher classification of income earner than, because you have an asset than he's versus someone who's just trying to make the rent by putting out some goods? You know, I'm trying to judge, do we do, look at everybody's financial ability to pay? Or you just say, no, we're all in this together, we need to keep it equal for everyone? And that's kind of what I'm trying, struggling with. But I'm also worried about the fact that eight thousand this year could be ten thousand next year. And once we start this stuff, five years from now, I say, you know, we've got a twenty thousand dollar commitment here. That's all I have.
Any other comments? Caucus.
Hello. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. I just have an answer with regards to the credit card fees that we're paying right now. So it ranges from one point seven five to three point eight, depending on the card type, so.
But it never hit four.
Three point eight, American Express.
So is that something we can, you feel we can renegotiate?
So I guess the question is, do we absorb the cost? But I was I was on the fence myself, is do we go down a road that you can never turn back on? And.
But we are saving staff.
But we are saving staff time, I get that. But again, yeah, it's.
But it's hard for me to differentiate that we have one group of our citizenry that can pay it.
It's, well, no, it's it's fee, it's fee recovery. Permits are fee recovery.
This is about convenience, not staff time.
You can always come down here.
It doesn't want to come into City Hall and deal with the station.
All right, so then should they pay for that convenience? We all buy stuff online because we don't want to stand in line at the mall.
Because it's convenient, yeah.
So do we pay a premium for that? Presumably, we pay less for it because we didn't have to go to the mall. That's the idea.
Yeah, I mean, I think that one of the things we've heard, one of the things we've heard from us overall, the more they're able to do online, even if they choose not to do it, they're happy that it's there. Like, that's what we're seeing overall.
Well, yet if you're if you're in a parking district and all of a sudden you have a surprise that, you know, you know, a surprise birthday party, everybody doesn't, you know, even an eight to say to death of the family or whatever, you have a bunch of people come over and all of a sudden you need some parking tickets, you can print them online now. That's a big, that's a huge thing, you know.
Yeah, we think it's.
You know, it's huge, especially with City Hall being closed every other Friday. And the weekends and whatnot. I would, I would say not, you know, I kind of lean still to not absorb it. I mean, starting something and you can't, so that's where I'm at.
I agree.
Yeah, I just see this thing could really get out of hand.
I mean, we're not talking a lot of money here.
No, not now.
But, yeah.
But I mean, we don't know how many.
But I'm getting at it for for, if we were to absorb it or if the consumer absorbs it, it's not a lot of money either way. But I mean, but you start something.
But once you start it, you can't say.
You can't turn it around.
Why don't we give it a year or try?
Give it a year or try with.
And see how it goes. And then we'll look at it again. How would that?
Do you want us to look at the fees or just go with the four percent?
The four percent, yeah.
That's not gonna make or break the deal, I don't think.
For the for the year, and then we can reevaluate it. Let's reevaluate it for a year as is. Okay, we need a form of a motion, anybody?
So move.
We're gonna move.
For us to proceed without absorbing any of the costs.
Gotcha.
For a year.
For a year.
Just consideration.
And then report back on.
How that worked out. I think most people will say, thank you for allowing us to do this. I'll pay the buck and a half.
So would you like this in a form of a roll call vote or? Mr. Miss clerk? Roll call vote, okay. Let's vote on thirteen A, motion by Juan Garza.
Second.
And a second by Coops. Call roll, please.
Councilmember Schnabelger.
Aye.
Councilmember Garza.
Aye.
Councilmember Coops.
Aye.
Mayor Dutton.
Aye.
Okay, item fourteen, the consent calendar. Any items want to be pulled or recuse?
I'd like to pull, Mr. Mayor, fourteen D, just for informational purposes only, for the matter of a vote. I am not requesting it for D to be pulled.
Fourteen D for just discussion?
Yes, sir.
You have nothing, Mr.?
No, fourteen D is good because we can talk about history of that street.
Okay, I'd let the record reflect that I'm gonna recuse myself from fourteen F due to a property conflict. So let's, before we vote on fourteen, let's get the discussion, do you want to get the discussion out of the way in fourteen D?
You have whichever you want to. So on fourteen D, thank you, staff, the questions I had on that, and that's the one on the solicitation bids for the.
Striping.
The striping, sorry, looking for it here. So I noticed in the back of the report that most of the arterial streets throughout the city are gonna be, would undergo this striping process, correct?
Correct, yeah, it's it's, we're doing two things. One, it's we're freshening the paint for the for the striping on the arterials. And again, that would be working east to east to west, Woodruff to Bellflower to Clark to out to Lakewood. And north to south would be Rosecrans, well, actually, not, yeah, not Foster. So it'd be Rosecrans, Somerset. We just did Flower, Alondra, and then down on Artesia. So there's a series of what they call RPMs, the raised pavement markers. The way they're currently configured and lined, for me to re-stripe the street, we actually have to paint over the top of them, especially for the double stripes. So we're going through, we're essentially scraping all those, we're removing them. We're gonna put the fresh track down and then we'll be doing reflective markers on the outside of the paint striping, just so in the future, it becomes easier for us to go through and and stripe it. We're just kind of, we're doing our normal striping, but we're also changing some of the configuration to it as well.
Perfect, so, and I'm assuming it's gonna improve safety and be more easily observable?
Certainly, yeah, you know, you know, years ago, we had to switch off the oil-based paint to the water-based. It fades out fairly quickly. You know, you used to be able to get two, three years off of a painting session. Now we get about six or seven months. So it kind of gets stretched for a little ways. But by removing those RPMs and placing them to the outside, it makes it a lot easier for us to paint because now we don't have to paint over the top of them or avoid them altogether.
Perfect. And how long would this project take?
I believe it's thirty working days.
Thirty working days for all those streets?
So I think by the time we go through the whole process, we're looking to award at the end of October. By the time we bring a contractor onboard, under contracts, his bonding and all that, we're probably talking the end of November, early December. Probably don't want to start it right during the holidays, it'll be a mess, so we'll probably pick it up sometime in January.
Okay, great. And then is it possible that we can announce this on the on the website just so?
Yeah, so I was talking to the city manager earlier and then we'll certainly, we'll put out a kind of like a highlighted map area just kind of pointing out the arterials to everybody and letting them know that when we plan to start the work up.
Fantastic. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That completes my questions.
So you remember where you and I are always concerned about how the RPMs seem to move?
Well, yeah, I was gonna get into that.
Now, these won't move anymore?
They're not gonna be there no more, right? You're just putting reflector ones on.
Correct, yeah, so the 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 amount of RPMs that you have out in some sections of the streets that were required to be put in as part of grants years ago, you know, every eighteen inches on center type stuff, that is gonna be going away. So.
Just gonna have the reflector one in between the two dashes.
Yeah, there'll be reflective ones, they'll be spaced out a lot further. The more important issue here for us from a safety aspect is to be able to do more frequent painting and keeping the the painting fresh and up to date just because the wear on the paint goes so fast now.
Gotcha.
Do you have better adhesive than they did before?
When there's a thousand of them out there, if two of them move.
No, well, I'm not saying that, but I mean, I'm talking on laundry, they changed lanes on you.
What the problem was before, they were adhered on top of the old yellow line.
All right.
So they're all on top of the old yellow line. We've done them two or three times already. They don't stick to paint.
Now, that's not gonna happen this time, is it?
That will not be happening.
Yeah, so you're not gonna have those dots on the painted line anymore. You're gonna have the paint on paint, then you're gonna have reflector in between it. And then on the yellow lines, you're gonna have reflector just off of this on the center, on the asphalt. That's the way I read it in there. I just want a clarification.
We went through.
Because Dan and I really hate hate those things. It's just they move all over. They're half gone right now. And I was glad to see it on this consent calendar because the streets look really bad.
Well, and again, that's what, that, when this project was popping up as part of this this budget session, that was the direction we wanted to go is to get, start eliminating some of those and make it so we can do the painting more frequently. Right, right, right now, it's hard to get out there and paint because you have to go twenty-four inches, stop, go twenty-four inches, stop because you don't want to paint over the top of the RPMs because it just doesn't look good.
So Lakewood Boulevard, that's our possession now. Any of this activity go on Lakewood Boulevard?
Yeah, I believe so. There are some portions of Lakewood that are gonna be re-stripped as well. So there's some stuff that Caltrans has done in the past year, year and a half. And it's it's kind of, it's on par for the time being, but the areas that are real thin, we'll address those as well. Yeah, in total, we're looking at probably almost close to two hundred and two hundred and thirty thousand linear feet of paint that we have to do, two coats. So it's half a half a million linear feet of paint. So it's half a million linear feet of paint we have to do out there, so.
It's a lot of paint. And so when you change lanes now, you're not going to get, you just get a thump.
You get a thump.
You get a thump. Not a thump-thump.
That's good. More importantly, you get fresher light, painted lines.
The reflect, the paint has reflecting glitter kind of reflected at night. So it's special paint. You don't see that anymore. Thanks for bringing that up because I forgot about it.
Trying to share with the community.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move the consent calendar.
Second.
Okay, we got a consent calendar moved by Coops and a second by Garza with the mayor abstaining from, what was it, 14F. Without objection, that'll be the order. Sorry, guys. Council agency reports. Mr. Garza, you have anything tonight?
I do, as I always do.
Well, let's hear it.
So I will make this super quick. I wanted to thank the New Lions Club for inviting me to give them a quick update at their last meeting. On the, on September 26, city manager joined me. I thought that was a really good meeting, good questions. We also had the Contract Cities meeting that happened on September 26. It was hosted by the LA County Fire Department. It happened here at the main. A little lightly attended, but I thought it was a really good meeting and allowed us to show off our city to a lot of our cities. We also had a, along with staff, I joined staff at a, at a metro meeting to discuss our new upcoming light rail project on the 27th of September. I thought it was really productive. We definitely hashed out a lot of items that are coming up. So I'll leave it there. On a related note with Metro, the Metro Board is going to be having an upcoming meeting in November. And it's going to be a really big meeting that us and the rest of the southeast are going to be asked to show up in force to show our unity because. Yep, absolutely. So it's going to be a big one and I'll share more as I get more information from you. I should have more information this week on that meeting. But again, it's in a month and a half and it's going to be a big one. So I'll give you more information as I get it. Buffalo Car Show, I want to commend the New Lions for the great car show, as well as our staff for their support of that event. Great event. And then lastly, I wanted to just thank everyone and commend our mayor for the great job he did at our state of the city last week. I thought it was, got really good comments on that. So I just, again, thank you for everything, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
That's it.
Mr. Coops?
Yes, I got nothing but good comments on our state of the city of last week. The mayor is an old hand at this, having done it three times, and he gets better at it every year. And he was really succinct about everything that we're doing in the city. A lot of good remarks about the whole event, the food, the prayer was exceptional. Mike Bressard giving the story about the flag. Belfour High came and sang. It was just a wonderful event. Tomorrow, we're going to have something just as special when we have our mayor's prayer breakfast. Historically, this has always been called Liberty Week in Bellflower. We've changed it around a little bit where we used to have a parade and things like that. But we've kind of gone a different direction with the movie nights and the outdoor activities during the street fest. So throughout the year, we have activities, just not this one weekend. But it's always the birthday of Bellflower and we always enjoy participating in that throughout the city. We have visitors coming from Los Moches in the next 30 days or so. Again, as part of the international culture that we always try to promote here in Bellflower, it's an annual thing that's gone on for over 30 years. That's always a special time. Each year, we either go down there with a contingent or they come up here. And it's this year that they'll come up this way. So, yeah, we've got some great things going on in Bellflower. The building continues to go forward on Bellflower Boulevard. You can hear that we're restriping the streets so it'll be easier for you to navigate on our city streets. Yeah, things are good and hoping to continue that into the next year. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Coops. Councilmember Schnablerger, you have anything tonight?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
I really want to congratulate you on the way the city looks. And it's really looking good.
Well, I think it takes us all, the whole community and us and staff and our employees to make it all happen. So it's a lot of everybody. Thank you, Mr. Schnablerger. And then I too did the state of the city, as my colleagues reiterated last Thursday afternoon. And very well attended in a nice new building and it was, it went off well. And a lot of people were very excited about that. And with that, I was going to bring it up to the city manager if we could get that on cable. I assume it would be. So we will probably have some times and dates at a future meeting to be able to tell you when it's going to be aired on cable. And with that, I wish the city of Bellflower a good night. Thank you.